It is 5:30. I'd like to call this meeting of the Shasta County Board of Education to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sure all the trustees noticed that we added a new item on number three. We are now doing approval of the agenda. I'm not sure how this works.
Yeah, this would just be a motion second, but this is an opportunity if there are any adjustments that want to be, trustees would like to propose be made to the agenda, it would be now.
Any proposed changes?
I propose we add dinner.
That would be a good discussion to have under meeting feedback. Okay, well, if there are no changes, I'd need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve of the agenda.
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Harper?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura? And I affirm as well. So it's now time for public comment. Public comment for all agenda items and on matters that are not on the agenda but are within the Shasta County Board of Education's jurisdiction will take place during this item. Members of the public are invited to fill out a speaker card and review the speaking to the board handout available at the check-in table. The board is not allowed by law to take action on matters not on the agenda at this time. Do we have any yellow cards? Is there anybody here who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to item number five, which is a presentation, Learning Community for Native Success.
Yeah, we'd like to welcome Kelly Rizzi and Cindy Hoag, and they are going to be giving us an annual update on our Learning Communities for Native School Success grant work that they have been doing in partnership with our districts across the county.
I think it's working now, yes? All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Rizzi. I'm a director with SCOEY, going on 11 years here. I've been involved in this work for, oh gosh, since inception. And three years ago, we hired this lovely lady.
Hi, I'm Cindy Hoag. I am the Native Success Coordinator, and I am also a tribal councilwoman for the Wintu Tribe of Northern California.
So we're not going to take a lot of time this evening. We just want to share with you some of the successes of the activities of the grant over the last three years. So this is just kind of a look at where we're headed in the next 10 to 15 minutes. Cindy's going to give us a little background on local history. We're going to talk a little bit about the lesson design teams that have been in action for a number of years now. Cindy's going to share a lesson example. We're going to talk about our Native School Support Team and the impact they're having on our community. Talk a little bit about the Literacy Initiative and then successes and goals.
I would encourage you to, yeah, I would encourage you to make sure that the microphone does catch you because we are streaming to millions of people. Maybe not millions.
No pressure. So I'm sure that you know that there are four tribal entities in Shasta County, the Redding Rancher near, the Pitt River Tribe, the Wintu Tribe of Northern California, and then there is the Winnebago Wintu, which has a pretty much small percentage of the Winnebago people. And Shasta County is the territorial tribal territories of the Pitt River Nation, which are located in the upper right-hand corner there. Those are not all of the bands. There are 11 autonomous bands for the Pitt River people, and they go into four different tribes. The Wintu Tribe of Northern California starts up at Mount Shasta, goes down to Cottonwood Creek, and then to the east at Long Mountain, to the west at the Bald Hills, and then, of course, the Yana Tribe. So at the inception of the American Indian Advisory, we created lesson teams because having been an educator in Shasta County for many, many years, teachers repeatedly asked, we feel completely inept to teach local history of our native tribes, and it was a request that had continued to be brought to the county office. So we formed teams. I led those teams. And then three years ago, when we were able to hire Cindy through our Learning Communities for Native Success, she took over that work. So she's been leading it for the last three years. But just kind of in an overview, we do have five teams. These are the grades that are covered. The reason that we chose those grades was because we decided to use the California State standard, social, history, social science standards to guide that work so that we could connect it, make it meaningful for students and for teachers, but also have it be, you know, based on the standards that teachers have to teach anyway. So each tribe provides a knowledge keeper to co-create the lessons, and then the lessons are taken back to the tribe for approval. This is not a very quick process. It is a delicate process because we want to get it right, and we want to be honorable, and we really want to know that we're telling the truth accurately. Cindy is, of course, a part of the Wintu of Northern California tribe, but we have to have representation of all the members as well. So each lesson has an objective. This is, of course, is from the ninth grade lesson. Each lesson has an objective. It does have an assessment. This particular lesson is a 42-minute lesson for a high school class, so it is a pre-standing lesson. And in this particular, in this particular lesson, we took two articles from the local press. One was from 1899, and the other was from 2022. Students really enjoyed it because they know what it's like. So with the grant, three years ago, when we received, you know, the go-ahead to move forward, we were able to hire Nicole Lawrence and Amanda Brown, who are rock stars. I mean to tell you, half the time when I'm meeting with them, I'm just in tears because of the impact they have with these families. They're a part of our team, and they are, you know, they're available to all families in Shasta County. Any referral that comes in, Nicole and Amanda split up the referrals, and they go out and they meet with the people. They provide an element of relational health, of psychological safety, of practical tips, and connections to services in our community that families wouldn't have otherwise. And truly, I mean, Cindy's going to talk about celebrations and examples, but for some of these parents who have completely given up hope in themselves and in the community, these ladies kind of allow them to ride on their shirt tails of belief, and they check in with them, and they encourage them, and they breathe confidence into them. And because of that, because of their absolute commitment, we've seen enormous successes, which we'll talk about in just a moment. So the reason for the Native Success Grant was originally because of the high absentee rate of Native students. Forty-three point one percent is unacceptable. And at the end of '23, '24, the absentee rate had lowered to 28 percent. As far as referrals and contacts, talking about the Native School Support Team, during just the '24, '25 school year, we had over 1,000 contacts with Native families and students. So that is, that includes not only face-to-face, but going with the families to schools, maybe for IEP meetings, for SSTs, going to SAR meetings. Parents have asked for them to be there. This includes text messages, going with the family to maybe housing, finding housing. So some of the successes that we had, is our partnership with the Local Indians for Education or the Life Center. The Life Center has been around for over 50 years in the Native community, and they offer tutoring. We had a graduation honoring for our Native students. We hold cultural classes. We had, we just finished summer camp in the month of June, and that camp was a four-day camp where students were able to go and spend the night. We had youth leadership training with Native Wellness Institute facilitating. We had a gathering of Native Americans, or AOGONAH. We hold talking circles. We believe in our students there. And also cultural assemblies at schools where a representative goes to school, and they show regalia. The students might be able to read. They might be able to learn about Native plants. We also attend SAR meetings from the past, foster youth meetings, IEP meetings, Indian Health Welfare meetings with tribes, and student study teams. Talking circles are held bi-weekly at the Juvenile Court School. The largest number of residents at the Juvenile Court School are Native. We help working parents find summer care for their children. And then we had, we wanted to just give some examples of success stories, and I assigned the members to honor their family. So Family 101, the family had an attendance, the children had an attendance problem. The family was living in a tent behind the school, but the school was getting in a tent. We were able to find housing for them, find housing. The parent was able to get two jobs and was eventually given a full-time job. So kids are in school, and they're housed. Family 102 is a family that came from out of the area. It was an elderly family member who brought her child here because of the domestic violence issue. And they were living in, what is it, ammunition. And so the child would go to school, and the guardian was going to send him to go in the park. And as an older person in this heat, that would have been a horrible thing. And so we were able to help them find housing and make connection with them with our mother. This is a direct quote from Family 103, "I am sure grateful for the work you put in with these boys. Once they were set into the right place, they made up their own mind. They wanted to be better in school. I got to tell the judge that on Monday." Family 104, this particular oldest daughter was not attending school, built a relationship with one of our Native Success Team members. She worked with the daughter for quite a while. The daughter is now going to school full-time, and Dad said that the oldest daughter worked at Grandma's painting houses, used all her money to buy family members these days. Dad was very pleased with her selfless act of kindness for the mom. Family 105 is a direct quote, "Giving my kids the extra support they need to succeed, and also helping me navigate what that is." Family 106, "It being an advocate, by being an advocate, not just for the children, but for the families as well as the whole." We help students and families fill out their financial aid forms for our students going on past high school. Our team presented at the 43rd Annual Conference on Indian Education in Sacramento. There are a lot of people there. Facilitate, we facilitate a bimonthly Title VI or Indian Education meeting. Those are, not every school has Indian education, but the ones that do, it's a formula grant, so they don't have a lot of money. So we need to share resources, so they're able to share resources. And because of the Board's Literacy Initiative, yes, we were able to hold the Celebrating Indigenous Voices event, where we had teachers come in, and we had books for their libraries by Native authors. Eighty schools received books for their libraries, and teachers were able to meet the authors, and send a couple of the authors. But before I go into the goals, which are very brief but important, I just want to highlight the fact that the books in our libraries, what so much of the science shares is a sense of belonging. And when our students in Shasta County see books in their libraries and books in their classrooms with characters and authors who wrote the books, who look like them, who have similar histories as them, Cindy has heard from so many Native parents about how powerful that has been for our youth and our schools, and we can't thank you enough for your generosity. And as a part of the Board Initiative around literacy, that was a part of, that was an outcome of that. I forgot to say this. This is really important because so many of our grandmothers and great-grandmothers and grandfathers were taking the boarding schools. And so they don't have a real trust of the educational system. And so one of the things that has happened because of this, I run the Tribe's Facebook page, and so I posted on it, I put these books have been delivered to, and I listed some of the schools, and the very next day, I had a parent call me because she had sent her child to the library. He was in second grade, and she said, "He came home and opened the book." And I said, "Oh, that's great." She said, "No, no, you don't understand. He doesn't like to read." I mean, this is a big victory. So these are our goals moving forward. We're going to continue our work with the Life Center. It's been a very successful partnership. They have access to families that we don't have access to. We're going to expand the tutoring, which is exciting. We're going to work on increasing family engagement through our future work with literacy. The Ignite Reading Program is going to be offered. We're setting goals to increase graduation rates, decrease suspensions, local history and science lesson development. That's the next expansion of the lessons. We're doing history, social science now, but we're working, our goal is to move in more into science. And then to continue the education series, every other month, we offer an online education series. And then the thing I think I'm probably most excited about though is the youth leadership development, because all the research has proven that when we have youth voice and youth agency, we see engagement in school. We see lower chronic absenteeism rates. We see higher, you know, graduation rates. So we're really working on ways that we can weave that into a political framework. We would ask questions if you have any. Yes, thank you for having us today. I appreciate it.
I was just going to ask if we can have those slides emailed to us. And then, thank you for your service. I really appreciate it. And we're just wondering if there's any events that you can just send us, like an email, so that maybe we can participate with you guys in the future?
As long, as long as you let me know you want to go, we'll send them.
Oh, yeah. I want to go.
Yeah, we can definitely, some of our virtual trainings have been shared out with the board, and some trustees have actually joined into some of those learning sessions. But we can, we can take upcoming community events, and I can include them in updates. Slides have been added to your online agendas.
We had Mike at our graduation honoring. It was beautiful. Did you get to stay for the dancing?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Any more questions?
I did have a couple comments and a question. So one of them was, I did participate in one advisory board meeting, and I was really impressed by the amount of organizations that are involved in that consortium. And I just thought that would be something interesting to point out, because I don't know if people realize, I didn't even realize, that the extent of how many people are coming together to support Native students. So I thought that was wonderful. Also, the Community Connectors. I have a personal experience that I wanted to share with you with the Community Connectors. I have a son that was struggling, and I always referred to one of them this year. And I know all the resources, and I can refer myself, and I know all the things. But simply having her to communicate with, when I was overwhelmed with things I couldn't share with anybody else, was amazing. And it was, I mean, I can't even put a price on what that was for my mental health and just having somebody there to be able to talk to and acknowledge. They really were just so friendly, and I knew she cared, and that...
Authenticity, yeah.
Yeah, authenticity was so important. And so just a personal thank you for that as well.
One of the things that we have heard is that you can get out there with all these resources, and there are lots of resources, but you get all these people involved, but they follow along the wayside, and they don't always follow through, and they don't keep their journey dead. And our success is in this.
Yeah. And she, I mean, to speak to that, she did have to text me like 20 times before I called her back. Because I was like, "Yeah, I'll call you this day," and then, "I'm busy. I'll call you this day. I'm busy." But she never gave up. She kept trying to connect. And then thankfully, when I did respond with her, I was like, "Oh, wow. I'm so glad we connected." And then she followed up with me a couple more times, and that was all that I needed, but it was wonderful.
Thank you for that feedback, Jessica. I would like to share that with them.
And then my last thing was, there is still extreme discrimination happening with Native American students here in Shasta County in our schools. And I'm just wondering if there is anything that is being done to address that with the schools, like the one that had the federal complaint made against them for discrimination, Fall River.
They are doing amazing work to take, turn things around. They've met with the tribal council up there. They have the support. They actually have a MOU with the tribal council.
Yeah.
So that staff is working really hard. And we stand in direct support to any school that's experienced this. Cindy has an expert in support of this, helps support that process.
One of the things that I experienced up there that was completely shocking to me was the name that they use for the continuation school up there. And I thought that, is there somebody from the Pitt River Tribe on the board?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it would be, when you were talking about somebody that was, what did you call them? The storykeeper?
The knowledge keeper.
Knowledge keeper, story.
Yeah.
So I thought that finding someone like that to keep that information about how that came about, like to keep that story of what happened there, and then, and then working to change that is really important. So I just wanted to say that.
Two weeks ago, Cindy and I met with the superintendent and the new person at district level for, to work to do NAID work. And we talked about that topic, to work through it and to make sure that it was correct.
Yes, great.
Actually, a tribal elder who is the auntie of the chairman.
Okay. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Hold on. Any other questions? I had a few comments and a couple of questions for Cindy. First, and, sorry. So first of all, cutting the chronic absenteeism rate in half is incredible. In a year?
Thank you.
Way to go. Okay. Well, I mean, whatever you're doing, it's working, and it's obvious because you don't make changes like that. You don't see demographics change like that overnight. So, two questions. All right, when you were here the last time, we talked about the knowledge keepers. Okay, so have the tribes genuinely engaged that feedback process? Are we actually engaging in a give and take?
We are. In fact, they are, the Pitt River Nation is the community we're working with right now. And I am getting emails from them. They sent me back a bunch of corrections, and I've been working on the corrections, and they're emailing me almost every day, "When are you going to have that so that we can take it back to our council?"
I like that.
So, well, you might like it, but you know, I spend a lot of time on the phone at home.
Well, it's still, I like it because that kind of engagement means that the community's engaged.
Exactly. And it is all about relationships. I mean, one of the knowledge keepers, part of my family is Pitt River, and one of the knowledge keepers is, I've called her auntie for my entire life. And so she's really excited about this, and she's very pro-education, which is necessary. You have to have elders that are pro-education.
Absolutely. And the third place I wanted to go to, and I'm going to combine these into one, is family engagement, youth leadership. Okay, because the way to get, grow youth leadership is to model effective leadership, and you can do that through family engagement. And I was wondering, just, are any of the youth leaders interested in becoming knowledge keepers?
You have to be called. It's a gift. You have to be called to be a knowledge keeper. In my tribe, I don't know, I can't speak for other tribes, but in my tribe, you're appointed by the knowledge keepers, the present knowledge keepers. My son is training to be a knowledge keeper right now.
That answers my question.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, yes, right, because teaching the next generation and keeping that tradition going is the way to build the culture that we need, and the social division that exists.
Absolutely. And it's wonderful. It's just beautiful that we have these lessons that we're teaching classes. And it's about here. That's what kids really are excited about. It's, you know, I live there.
Well, thank you for everything that you're doing and everything you will do. Thank you. And you too, Kelly. Thank you very much. We will now go on to item number six, Board Initiatives. Each month, we do a Board Initiative, and I see Jen's already coming forward, so I know that it's Substance Use Prevention this month. So, thank you, Jen.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Hi, Board. So with substance use prevention, just because it is the summer, we don't stop having fun. So before I get into the things we have been involved in, right now, our staff is reviewing all of their presentations, making sure information is up to date, making sure it's on track with, and I wrote it on my hand because I couldn't remember the numbers, AB 2865 and AB 2429. And so we're reviewing our pre-post surveys, editing our youth commission applications. It's a whole time to just get ready, so then once school starts, we can hit the ground running. So that's what our staff is doing in the office right now. But there's some highlights that I wanted to share with you all of things that our students have also been able to do. So we got the chance to speak at the City of Redding, or City Council meeting. And so we had six students with three speakers, and we were asked to attend to speak on behalf of, or in favor of, more strict regulations for the tobacco retailer licensing. And so the masterful Carrie Chudy put together a video that I'm going to share with you all. And it's about, about that. So.
A common assumption is that students who are star athletes with good grades would never lay a hand on tobacco products. I'm here to tell you that is far from the truth. I witnessed firsthand my peers using tobacco products, particularly vapes, as early as junior high. The average age of beginning tobacco product use... The average age of beginning tobacco product use in Chasta County is 13 years old. Even the smartest adolescents with good grades and bright futures ahead are susceptible to addiction to tobacco products because of their accessibility. Limiting access to tobacco products in local retailers is the most effective way to reduce accessibility, and I urge you to consider making that change.
When I attended Chasta High, some students would cut class or go during lunchtime to nearby tobacco retailers and buy products there. The ease of accessibility with the close proximity of tobacco retailers to Chasta County schools is a disaster. If we work together to solve the problem, we'll help benefit our community and help our youth grow into healthy future leaders and citizens.
It's hard to drill healthy choices into young minds when there is a tobacco store within a thousand feet of over 54% of Reading City Schools. Chasta County's rate of students using tobacco is over twice the state average. The root of the issue is the alarmingly widespread access to tobacco to minors. Tobacco retail licenses have been an effective means of restricting youth access to tobacco in other areas. Before a tobacco retail license was implemented in Orville, the youth sale rates were 22.6% and after, zero. Woodland was at 32% and dropped to eight, and Davis went from 30.6% to 12. If these other cities can see success, kids in Reading should get that same opportunity. Every child growing up in Chasta County has the right trip, bright future, that shouldn't be dimmed by tobacco use that could have been prevented.
So, as you can see, two of those, Caitlin and Sophia, were part of our youth commission. Audrey is a student who graduated from Chasta High and then came back because she's really interested in advocacy. And so, being able to be in the room for that was really cool because, you know, they're up there, they're saying they're part of the SCOE Youth Commission, and my, I was just, my heart just felt warm all evening, and they're just really, really cool kids, so. And they put those speeches together, they actually work hand-in-hand with Mark Mazzano and Kristin Schrader, and so, they work with our students to develop their speeches. And so, the result was that the city council rejected the ordinance and opted for a broader enforcement, so they want stricter regulations. And so, right now, this next Tuesday or Wednesday, I think it's Tuesday, that will come back before the city council, and they will revoke. So, they, yeah, we, I mean, but with the city council, sometimes the dates change, but right now, it's supposed to be this kind of Tuesday. So, they're going to come together and talk about how to make it more robust. It started at six, but our students didn't speak till nine. So, usually, we get pushed to the end, and it's when all the drama really starts to pick up, so. But anyway, I, they should go on, you know, anywhere between eight and nine, depending on what else is on the agenda. But I can send you all a calendar invite for that if you are interested in attending. Right now, our students aren't speaking at that one, but they are going to be there to be seats in the crowd. And then, two other summer opportunities that we have, we, our staff is presenting at Silk Camp, and so, they're presenting opioid infonctional and underage drinking presentations. Anticipated reach is 100 middle school students. And at Silk Camp, we're also able to give out youth commission applications, and so, we present to the students, but then, the counselors there, we also say, "Hey, we see your interest in leadership. We have this great opportunity with peer education and our youth commission." So, it's a delightful one.
Can you tell us what Silk Camp is?
Chasta Youth Leadership Camp, and it's run by Youth Options. Yeah, and they believe it's at Chasta College, but no, I can't remember. Or Simpson? Yeah. And then, we also have our peer-to-peer education in our Project Shared Summer programs. So, we don't have all of our students who are peer educators available during the summer because it's summer, and some of them have already moved to where they're going to college or they're on vacation, but we have a few that are available, and so, they'll be going out to Happy Valley, North Cottonwood, ARSTEM, and Bella Vista in the next couple of weeks. So, and that's for the third through fifth grade, healthy life choices, lessons, how to find trusted adults, all that sorts. And then, that is the end of what I have presented for what we're doing this summer. Any questions for the board? Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you for whoever put that video together, because it happened, but I didn't get to see it, and that was really awesome to see. So proud of those kids, and grateful for city council to work with them, to teach them how to do that. So, can the commission keep us updated possibly, maybe when that final ordinance does pass? If we can get that, the final ordinance, once it passes, I'd love to see it.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Jen? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would just love to throw a highlight on the work that Jen and her team have done, and this is the power of initiatives, right? So, when you think of what the board initiatives, the potential of that, I just, I loved, I loved the student voice and I loved the data.
A whole more question. Have we invited our current student board members to attend? For that meeting on Tuesday? I think we will do that. Can you also send us the emails? Oh, okay. One more question? Sorry, I'm full of questions. When did our next meeting? No, the, yeah, that one. Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, Approval of the Consent Agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of items that are routine in nature and are expected to be passed with a single vote. Any board member can pull an item from the consent agenda. So, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing no, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. We will start with Jessica.
Aye.
Arthur? Teresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
And I affirm as well, motion carries six to one. Item eight is information on items. I'm not going to read through them all, it's budgets from all three of our charter schools and their LCAPs from all three of the charter schools in it, but item one is the general fund and early charter services snapshot board report. Does anybody have any questions about informational items at this time? Then, we'll move on to item nine, which is the action item, instructional service, DASS eligibility for Chasta County Independent Study.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Kayla.
This is an item requesting your approval. It's an application that comes forth every three years. Basically, it's for the dashboard alternative school status, and it's a status that is then noted on the California dashboard. You may recall Carrie mentioned it during her LCAP presentations, using the word DOS. It's something that California allows, so that schools can have that status on the dashboard, and in addition, they can qualify for funding, like comprehensive school support, for example, and also, look at a one-year graduation, what do they call it, a one-year graduation rate, which includes graduates. There's a formula for it. I can give you the handout if you'd like, but it includes 12th graders in addition to some early 11th graders, not only students that earn diplomas, or fourth and fifth year graduates that earn diplomas, but also students that earn other certifications. And so, that information is also on the California dashboard under School Details. And so, every three years, we come forth with the application. This is for our independent study program, because our other programs do qualify by virtue of being a juvenile court school and the other being a special education county run program.
Questions?
I did have a question, but I think you answered it in your speech, so. I didn't know if this was what program it was for. So, when it said 70%, I was thinking of our criminal detention center, and I was like, well, most of these folks fit the high-risk category, so I was wondering, what is the other 30%? But since this is our independent study, that makes more sense that the kids that can come to me.
Further questions? Then, we would need to approve the DOS eligibility for Chasta County Independent Study School. Do we have a motion to let it pass?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve item 9.1.1, DASS eligibility for Chasta County Independent Study. Roll call though. Arthur?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
And I affirm as well, motion carries seven, zero. Item 9.2, Administrative Services. One under this is Board Policy Administrative Regulation 1250, Visitors and Outsiders. This is a first read, so we'll explain that very quickly. We typically discuss this over the course of two meetings, any kind of board policy or change, and, but we can't waive the second read after we have discussed it at this, at this meeting. So, Mr. Freeman?
Can I just make a correction?
Yes.
There's a word missing in the last sentence of the first paragraph on the AR.
There is.
Okay, thank you.
There should be a following immediately here, before upon, there should be immediately register. And so, as everybody here knows, we have a safety director that was hired during last school year and is a part of, the safety director's task has been kind of like reviewing our policies and procedures, and one of the things that we've been looking at is visitors to school campuses, but as well as to our administration buildings. And we found a gap where we do not have an adopted board policy that addresses visitors accessing either of those sites. And so, Ayla Tucker, our safety director, took on the task of drafting the board policy and the AR that you see before you here. Included in the packet, you'll see, because we didn't have a previous board policy, this is a new board policy for us. We did take the CSBA draft that was provided, and then, we gave you a red line version, so it shows exactly what we took out of the CSBA language, what was added to that language, and then, a clean draft of what we are proposing. And with that, I will turn it over to Ayla Tucker to be able to describe a little bit what went into the policy and the reasoning behind it.
Thank you, Ayla Tucker, Safety Director. Good to be here for my first time. So, just some background, as echoed in the cover sheet, when I first started my position only about three months ago, one of my initial goals was really to review and have a lay of the land of what we have internally at SCOE. What policies and procedures that fit into the general category of safety. It's kind of a big umbrella term for a lot of different things, but also, emergency preparedness and response. So, as Austin had mentioned, this was an item that I identified as really being a standard across districts and county offices of education that we did not have. And so, my goal was to draft this, bring it to the board, so that we can really lay that foundation. I think some of the important aspects, yes, it is utilized after the CSBA sample, but I think it's important not just to copy and paste what an organization provides, but really provide that review and see what other areas and districts are, what have they implemented as well. So, within this review and development of the proposed draft that is here before you, includes a review of the districts. So, the county, not districts, I'm sorry, county offices of education, so that includes the surrounding counties, Siskiyou, Trinity, Ute, Tahima, all the way down to about Glenn County and Yolo County, to ensure, you know, really, what do they have in their drafts? Are there things that are missing from the sample that we need to take into consideration? And also, the unique factors that our county may experience. I also reviewed district policies. For the most part, the CSBA policy sample has been adopted. There are some slight variations, but overall, this is really a standard policy across LEAs. One of the other aspects I think is important to highlight as to why really visitor registration and having this policy in place is really accountability. So, during emergency response events, so whether that be a fire, any sort of event that requires an evacuation, a lockdown, or a flood, as we've seen, you know, in some other recent events across the country, it is really, really important to have accountability of individuals and members of the public that come into our spaces, so that we can ensure when we're evacuating, that we're doing it thoroughly, and that we're not leaving people behind, and that our procedures match our policy, and there's consistency across the programs and services that we provide. So, with that, I will go ahead and pause and see if you have any questions.
Thank you. That's a lot of work to put it together. I know, I know, going off of, from sample policy and then tailoring it to your area is challenging, so thank you for taking the time to do that. I think that I just, the only thing I saw was the missing, the missing word, register, but you already caught that. And then, also, I was wondering, there's a lot of verbiage about the registration process, but then, for some reason, we took off the registration procedure from our AR. And so, it's a little confusing because it says, you know, we will post the requirements for how to register and the procedures, but then, our AR has no procedure in it at all. So, I don't even know what that's going to entail, what are they going to be asking for and whatnot. I'm just confused as to why that's not in here.
Yeah, absolutely happy to elaborate on that, and thank you for pointing that out, because that was intentional in removing that language. And the reason I did that is because, or I'm proposing that, is because a lot of our sites are different, and there's different requirements in different populations that are served. So, for our facilities where, like for our school sites, let's say, for example, Excel, those registration requirements may be different based on the population that they serve. And so, alternatively, at Magnolia, to come in and let's say you are a contractor and you're there to pay the fees, that registration requirement is going to be variable, or variable between those two sites. And so, instead of having this long policy, the intention was really to create a foundation and let each program and service that we provide across the agency tailor it to their needs. So, the public knows, when you come, there is going to be a visitor registration process, and the goal is not to make it more onerous than it needs to be, but really bare bones, which is really my, my personal approach when it comes to policies, is not to go over the top and list everything, let's do a foundation, make sure it's comprehensive, but not onerous to the programs, the members of the public, and the processes that are in place already.
Thank you, that makes sense. And I just would like to ask Lidl Council, so that doesn't, that's okay, that we don't have, I mean, it's an AR, and it's laying out procedure, but not laying out procedure? So, if someone was to visit a site and say, "Hey, you said there was, but why are you treating me differently?" Could we just put registration procedures site-specific maybe in our, in our AR, or is that not even necessary? Do you see where I'm going, Tom?
Great question, and thank goodness, I just read that penal code a few minutes ago while Kayla was talking. And so, the part that Kayla has, Ayla, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Has deleted, the penal code says you can get as much of these information as you want, so you can see its name, address, age, purpose, and all of that. So, those are the things that are allowable, and I believe, as Ayla said, you know, if you strike it out, that's fine, you can still request whatever information you want. And I would expect, and I haven't spoken to Ayla about this, don't want to clear on the spot, but I would expect that for school sites, you're generally going to want to see ID, but as she said, if you're just a contractor paying a fee, you might just say, "What's your name?"
Yeah, generally, that is the intention, you know, there's going to be sites that have more sensitive populations, and we want to take that into consideration, versus where it is really just maybe a business action that they're conducting, and we don't necessarily need to do the full shebang.
Further questions?
Yeah, maybe I, there's multiple pages. So, this is the final one that we'd be approving?
So, as President Brown mentioned, it's coming to you as a first read, which gives you the flexibility to either take action tonight or to provide direction based on revisions, and then, we can bring back another copy. We did already have one revision that we need, that we know we need to make in terms of the addition of that word. So, that is at the discretion of the board in terms of the first read. So that is at the discretion of the board in terms of the first read, and the way it was listed on the board, you have the option to go either direction.
Could you scroll up to the, this is the top page that we're looking at, or is this the bottom page?
Yes, this would be the administrative regulation at the top.
Was there a difference?
Yes, there's also the board policy, which I can...
Yeah, so that was my question, like, on the third paragraph, it says any person who is not a student, it seemed to like repeat itself, so I, I did send, it was late, but I sent a suggestion to like convince that to Robert and Mike from the team. So, I was just trying to clean that up so it doesn't repeat itself.
Yes, and I, I don't know, Austin, if you have that specific language, but that was shared with me. And from my perspective, I have no concerns about those proposed verbiage language. I agree, I've looked a little bit more cleaned up after you proposed that language and it was streamlined, so...
I can forward that email to the board, but the proposed language, the replacement would be, "Non-students and non-staff members must register as visitors immediately upon entering the county office of education's grounds or administrative sites. The designated staff member shall provide visible identification for all visitors to wear."
Further comments?
I'd be okay waiving a second, second read with just those two changes.
Okay, so I mean, the way this has to work, if we're, if we're going to approve it tonight, somebody has to request that we waive the second read, so...
I'll second.
I can't hear you, Laura. I mean, do we want the, the proposed board policy to come back after the revisions? Or do we just want to make the revisions tonight? And then wait the second read and approve it tonight?
I mean, is there a problem with bringing it back?
Oh, no.
I'm not following your...
There is no, we, usually with board policy, it is the first read with the, with the second read. And when there's consensus with the first read, the second would be waived, and there would be a motion to reflect that, and then the board would approve it.
To me, it's like if we're making changes, it'd be nice to see it again, so I don't think I would waive the second read.
That, that sounds to me like we are not going to waive the second read, and is that, that's what you want. And we will bring it back next month for approval.
And that email from Arthur with the proposed language has been forwarded to the board.
So, so let's bring this up.
Can I ask Ayla a question? Is there any reason that, like, is this going to mess you up if we slow it down a month and kick the can a little bit? Or, because it's just two little small edits, we could pass it tonight?
You know, either way, I think it's at the board's pleasure. Predominantly, the practice is already in place across our facilities. So really, this was just codifying the procedure. So if it were to come back for a second re, reading and a vote, I don't personally have anything that would be held up by it.
I thought, I thought we were, yeah, I'm stumbling on the process, but it seems like we would approve it tonight with the changes, but then it would come back for a second reading, so there'd be a second chance for us to see it with those changes, and that we would still make a vote to approve it tonight?
Aye.
I think Mr. Freeman stated it correctly. If there's a motion to waive the second reading and approve it with the changes, then that motion will carry the day. And it'll be approved today. And so it's just a question of which motion the board desires to approve. And if Laura wants to make a separate motion to have it come back for a second read, then that would, if that motion carries the day, then that's what you would do. Your board bylaw does give you the option to waive the second read. Correct, you can vote on it, it'll be approved tonight if you waive the second read.
So I'll try, so I will make a motion to approve it with the changes that were noted tonight, but to bring it back for a second.
Is there a second?
So if it, if it was approved tonight, and then it came back, would it be coming back as an information item at next month's meeting?
Well, Austin, actually, some boards put it back on information, some put it on consent for the second reading. It seems to me that you put it on consent most of the time. Sorry.
We're, we're discussing things when, when there's a call for a second on the table, so I either need a second so that we can discuss this, or we need to table this entire discussion.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second of Laura's motion?
Can I make a substitute motion? Pass it tonight with the changes that we just made and have it come back on consent, not for a second read? I'll second that motion.
Hang on, okay, thank you. Would that satisfy your, it, it sounded, it's, it was very similar, I mean, it was, we're going to approve it tonight, and then bring it back as an informational item next month after the revisions have been made. But we, we would waive the second read, is that correct? Okay, so, discussion, Laura? Okay, well, if there is no discussion, it has been moved, Laura, do you withdraw your motion? Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we approve, approve the board policy 1250 as amended tonight. I want to be very, very, very careful about the amendments. Add the word register, and I was cleaning up the language of that one paragraph. Waive the second read and bring it back for review on next month. Is, is that correctly, is that correctly stated?
As a consent agenda, right? As a consent item, right?
As a consent item, so that would make it an action item? No, no, I mean, if it's on the consent agenda, we can just go through it, we, we just, it would just be approved. Is, now, is that correct? Is that what the board wishes, how the board wishes to proceed at this time? Thank you, okay, so we will do, well, we're going to do it well. And it's Teresa's turn to go first.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
And I affirm as well, seven, zero. Ayla, thank you very much, and it's good to see you again. Item 9.3.1, Association of California's County Boards of Education Membership. This has been in the works for some time.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Included in your agenda were the slides that Bina presented in our last meeting. In those presentations, information about the dues and the amount to join ACCBE was included. We've recently included in your, I believe in your meeting materials and online would be the actual ACCBE invoice, so...
This is an action item.
So there was only one thing that I didn't get an answer for, and it was my fault, because I should have reached out to, how do you pronounce her name, is it Bina or Baina? Bina?
Yeah, Bina, left of the way.
I should have reached out to her sooner, but the one thing I'm waiting for is a list of things that they have lobbied for to date as ACCBE. I kind of did a history 60 years back into CSBA, and basically it looked like the ACCBE portion of CSBA just kind of mirrored whatever lobbying was, or legislative advocacy. And so, I was just curious, she said they were going to continue the lobbying and advocacy, but I was wondering if they were going to continue to modern, mirror CSBAs, or if they were going to take on their own kind of flavor of advocacy. And so I was waiting for, somebody has that now, I don't, I don't know, Robert, no, okay.
I, I have some of, of their, the things that they've advocated for, but I don't have a, a complete list, no.
She shared a, she shared a brief list of the bills.
I asked that question, I, I do have notes, but I think there's only two, yeah. Be okay passing it tonight, but that is just one thing I still would like to see.
I, I also would like to see that, I do remember when Jessica asked the question, and I think there were two or four bills that they were supporting right now, but I would like to see it as well, just to make sure they stick to education-related issues.
Well, the agenda item that we have for tonight is to approve our membership with ACCBE, so... I need a motion.
I move that we approve joining the ACCBE.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the, the membership with ACCBE. Discussion? Then we will proceed with a roll call vote?
I have a discussion.
I'm sorry.
I personally feel like they're just too new, and we should wait a while for them to get it together a little bit. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Jessica. Further comment?
Maybe, Robert, you could inform us, because it seems like a lot of them have been on that committee that you were on. So it's kind of like a, not a splinter group, but a group that's devoted to county initiatives instead of local school board initiatives, right?
That's correct, yeah, no, I mean, the, the, the people who have formed this group are dedicated members of their county boards of education. I'm thinking, I, I haven't actually crunched the numbers, but just thinking of, 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 four of the seven people have over 100 years of experience on county boards, so, and they've been very active on the, with CSBA, when, when it was, ACCBE was our county board, with CC, CSBA. They were very active on the, with ACCBE, on the legislative advocacy issues. David Patterson, for instance, has been doing this for 25 years, so, and Bina has been doing it almost that long as well. So I mean, it's, 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 these are very trustworthy people who are dedicated to improving the relationship of all the county boards in California with each other, and with the Assembly as a whole. So I, I have, I have full confidence in, in their ability to perform this function, so...
One of the, one of the other things that I was just pondering was their, like, I do value the, their collective wisdom and their years of experience on county boards, but it seemed that they just lacked diversity because they're all board members, they're all county board members, whereas CSBA is full of, not that we need to make a difference, but I just appreciate a more diverse group.
Well, I mean, for, for, to, to my thinking, as an advocacy for county boards, we are focused, the ACCBE is focused on what county boards do.
Right.
Okay, CSBA is focused on what school boards do. Okay, county boards are an afterthought.
Right, but they have a lot of different types.
I'm, I'm very, very well-connected with the CSBA group that performs this function as well. And yes, they do a great job, but I mean, they, they are, that, there is that, that, that hazy middle ground, where some of the, you know, from the county, school boards and, and the county boards, it's, it's a little, a little confusing. And so, so for the ACCBE, ACCBE to focus solely on county board issues, seems to be like a very, very, very good thing.
Oh, yeah, I agree that it's, that it's positive to focus solely on county boards, but to have, to have the people running it be solely, their experience solely on county boards, there's not, there's not, there's not outside thinking coming in, it's, you know, and there's a lot of, they know how to do things the way they've been doing things, so there's not an opportunity for new thought.
Well, they, they want us to provide someone to be on their board as well. So, I mean, if you want to provide that new thought, that, and, and that, they would be more than happy to have you to your...
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm, anyways, that's...
No, it, it, it's, I, I, I understand your, your question, and your thought, I, I just, um, are we going to join this group or not? That's the question, and that's, that's what the motion is on the table.
I know, but I was discussing, I thought we were discussing. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, we're just adding this into the addition of CSBA. We're keeping CSBA, and we're just adding this as an addition.
That's correct. We will still, still be represented by CSBA at, as at, through their county board member services. But that is not going to change at all.
I think I'm a little bit jaded, because ACCBE was not that great of an organization. It was kind of just redundancy, and, but I, when Bina was here, I heard that there, I mean, I heard some new energy with it, and it seemed like there was more on-the-ground kind of work. And so I think I would be worth giving it a try. I like the idea that they weren't going to be charging for every little webinar, or whatever they, they put on. So that would be, so I think, you know, you could go into it, well, let's see, let's see, let's join it and see what we think, after a year, did we get value from it or not?
Thank you, Laura, I, I think that's a great idea. Any further discussion? Then we will proceed with a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jessica?
No.
Arthur?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And I affirm as well, that is six to one. Item 9.3.2, Review of Board Bylaw 9323 Meeting Conduct.
Now, I'll tell you, in our last meeting, the, the subject of Robert's Rules of Order came up, and so, as part of the follow-up from our last board meeting, you know, it was requested that board bylaw, well, not specifically board bylaw 9323, but the topic of Robert's Rules of Order as a, as a procedure for conducting board meetings was asked to be brought back as an agenda item. As we reviewed our board bylaws, we see a relevant board bylaw being 9323 as a place to add that if the board so, so wishes. I'm sure Tom has, has a, some legal guidance as far, or lack of legal guidance as far as specifically requiring Robert's Rules of Order. I think we've heard it, but we'd love to hear it again. And it is here for possible action to, to add language to board bylaw 9323 if the board so wishes.
Good evening, everyone. Pardon me if I am repeating brief comments from last time. Interestingly, the Brown Act doesn't say anything about parliamentary procedure, it doesn't even use the word motion. And the Education Code says that an affirmative vote of the majority of the, of the members of the board, membership of the board, four out of seven, is required for action, and that's all. And your current board bylaw just says, well, you'll conduct your meetings in accordance with bylaws and procedures. It doesn't specify anything. So there are, you know, Robert's Rules of Order, there's the alternative set of rules, parliamentary rules, the name of which is escaping me at the moment. And those are all fine choices, and within the board's discretion if you want to do it. My personal preference, if, if I may be so bold, is that the Robert's Rules of Order can be complicated. Experienced parliamentarians have to read it, and you know, the full set of Robert's Rules of Order has 13 articles and 70 rules, seven, zero rules. So, most of the time when I, you know, search for people that... So, most of the time when I, you know, search for people that are using Robert's Rules of Order, what they're in fact using is a three, four, or five-page summary of it. So, those are my thoughts. I, I think it would be acceptable for the board to leave it as his, um, because you have an established practice of motions and seconds, which seems to work. I think it would be acceptable to adopt Robert's Rules of Order, or say to staff and myself, go find us a couple of shorter examples. Those are, those are the, the options that come to my mind. I'll be happy to answer questions.
It's been my experience with groups that use Robert's Rules, that we spend more time discussing the rules than we do the substantive issues that we need to discuss as, as, as the groups that we were. My observation, it's, it's heuristic, it's not, not supportive of statistics or anything. It's just what I've noticed over the years, is that, that once you walk into a firm process, that you will spend all, all your time discussing that process. More discussion?
I think we need some kind of procedure set up, because sometimes we have discussion before, sometimes we have it after. Sometimes people are talking over each other. And so I think something formal needs to be adopted. I, I like Robert's Rules of Order, but I do see how it could get bogged down, too. I do see how that could happen. But I do like it because it's formal and there's clear set guidelines. So, I don't know how anyone else feels, but that's just my thought.
Yeah, I, I pretty much, um, echo what you're saying. I do like Robert's Rules, but it is a lot. I've read all of it. And to try and do a meeting like that, I don't know. That would be really challenging. But my idea was perhaps, like, I, my couple of things were talking over points of order and discussions. And so maybe if we gave staff, like, the, I mean, for those of us that care about the things, um, maybe if we just had them come up with some type of, you know, shorter procedural that included the things that we so far have experienced that we don't like, maybe?
I think that would be good. I mean, if we just had a set order for like, you know, are we discussing before the motion is made? Are we discussing after the motion is made? And then points of order, they do need to be, something needs to happen when those are raised. So I can think of a couple of different examples when things happened and then they're just kind of brushed aside as if it didn't matter. And so I think we need something, so I'd be fine with giving, you know, asking Tom or someone else to come up with maybe five, six, five or six things, just to help meetings run more smoothly.
So, to, to be clear here, um, what, what you're asking for is a process for the procedure for, for an action item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the points of order discussed, and points of order, because those could come up at any time, not necessarily just an action item.
Well, you could, um, as part of this meeting conduct, um, called bylaw, it has meeting procedures, so it seems like that could, it could include processes. I mean, I also, I feel like the order are, are so fussy. Things going out, but, um, sometimes you just have trouble even doing a roll call vote or something. And I was like, so I, I think it's hard to, um, think, you know, I agree with your thing that you're going to, focusing so much on the process and trying to meet that. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of Robert's Rules of Order, but I can, I do go with the, um, the idea of, um, clarifying what our best practices are.
I like that. That sounds reasonable to me.
I, I mean, I'm, I would, what I, what I would like is just a fair process. And that's why I really like Robert's Rule of Orders, because it gives you rules to operate within. And in the boards that I've been on, it actually just gives that, the chair, your, your position. You would call on the member and then they would speak and that person would have an opportunity to speak. And then when they were finished, then the next person would be able to speak. And then everybody would have an opportunity to speak. So the procedure is very nice. And then it allows for debate and discussion to be had without other folks talking over each other. And if we all know the operating system that we're within, we can work within those rules. And so I find it that it would ensure every member has a fair voice in our discussion and maintain a high level of form and professionalism in our daily business and provide a structured framework for respectful debate during our, the moments of intense discussion. So when those things happen, the point of order is very nice, because it slows everything down. Let's stop, reflect, let's look at the rule. Okay, well, I can hear what you're saying, but now we need to move on to the next board member and follow, follow the system that's laid out. So I really like Robert's Rules of Order. And I would like to make a motion that the Shasta County Office of Education adopt the most updated version of Robert's Rule of Order as a parliamentary procedure for all of our meetings.
Can I clarify your motion? Shasta County Board of Education used Robert's Rules?
Shasta County Board of Education, yeah.
Well, we, if, if the motion on the table, if we need a second.
I also like Robert's Rules of Order, so I will second it so we can discuss it.
Okay, but let's discuss it then. I think I've made it pretty clear that, that I don't, I think it's, it's, it's too onerous. Uh, I'll, I'll be brutally frank here. This is herding cats up here. So I appreciate your desire for an unstructured process. I don't think the process should be governed by seventy rules, okay? Seventy individual rules, and any one of which could stop debate at any time, okay? That would, would extend the, the length of this meeting into the wee hours of morning, especially since we're starting at five thirty now, so, um, I, I, I think having it structured is a good idea. I don't think it should be so structured that it's, uh, seventy rules that must be followed. Yes, Laura?
Well, if we're going to vote on Robert's Rules of Order, I think we really need to see it and look at what some of the rules are in there. I'd also, um, if we want to do this, look at, I can't remember the name of the other one either, but there's another one that is not as, um, fussy as Robert's Rules of Order. It starts with an R, yeah.
That's it, Rosenberg's.
Okay, but the motion on the, on the table is for Robert's Rules.
Right, so I'm just saying, like, if we're seriously considering doing something like that, um, as a board member, I would want to really take some time to study what those, what Robert's Rules of Order includes and then be interesting to know what this other one, you know, have a link to it so that I could kind of peruse that and see how that varies. And I don't know, it's like, there's no need to, um, adopt it tonight. I think it's something that we should inform ourselves more on before we vote on it.
Yeah, I, I'd also, thank you, Laura. I'd also like to point out that if we do adopt this motion, all of us are going to have to spend time over the next several months attending classes here on Robert's Rules. Because if we're going to do this, we're going to do this, okay? And that would require a significant, uh, uh, amount of training for you two.
Point of order? What's the motion on the table?
Sure. And we're discussing.
What is it? Can you repeat it?
The motion is to adopt Robert's Rules.
And that's what you seconded, to adopt Robert's Rules tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Robert, about it could extend debate, but it can also end debate fairly quickly as well. So if we're getting too bogged down and discussing something for like thirty, forty minutes, there is a most, there is a way in Robert's Rules of Order to end the debate immediately and vote. So, yeah, I mean, I guess it could extend, but it could also end it fairly quickly, too. You know, calling the question ends the debate.
So I appreciate the flexibility of the fact that we are not, um, required to use Robert's Rule. But I also, um, see the struggle that we have sometimes with each other in having conversations, but also, um, the public. For example, last week when we had a community member coming up, um, speaking about things outside of the purview of this board and spewing, um, you know, untrue allegations against me and personal attacks against me. And there was nobody that spoke up and said, hey, this is against, you know, the purview of what we're doing here. And I feel like we are responsible for the taxpayers' money and what this board is supposed to be used for. And we should have a way that we can stop that kind of, um, commentary from happening and protect the board members up here also that are being spoken against. No, they're not. We have policy that's against that. We're not, we're not fair game to have false allegations made by community members. Well, um, we do have policies that says that that is not supposed to... As long as it's within the purview of the Board of Education.
Um, Laura is correct. The Brown Act specifically says we can't prohibit criticism of the board or employees. And that's a pretty broad rule, uh, even if the allegations are, are untrue or inaccurate. So it's pretty, pretty rare when you can gavel someone down. The number one example that comes, comes to mind is if someone is here asking for a zoning variation. Well, zoning happens at the city and the county not here. And, and here's a, a thought, if I may. I don't want to interrupt your discussion too much. But, uh, some board members are expressing a desire to become more informed about it. Consider whether to have staff with my assistance send you, um, a, uh, Robert's, Robert's Rules of Order, the full version, Rosenberg's Rules of Order, the full version, and some samples that we've seen over time that are just summaries. Because some boards will, will take the main chunks out of Robert's Rules of Order without it being so long and just have, you know, those same basic concepts as, as Mr. Oropi was describing. Motions, tabling, order of discussion, and things like that. And have five or six or ten pieces out of Robert's Rules of Order that are digestible and don't cause us all, um, you know, to have too much homework. Just a thought.
Can I ask, so then if that were given to staff, I think, Laura, you made the point, then we would be looking maybe at including that language embedded into board bylaw ninety-three two-three as a possible alternative to the motion that is on, currently on the floor, right? So if this motion fails, someone else can make another motion to do that, correct?
Right.
I wouldn't want to steal bits and pieces from different, like Rosenberg here and, you know, Robert's Rules there. And then we have this mishmash of something on our, it's because if you adopt the current version and the current vision moving forward, you can just go online and look at Robert's Rule of Order whenever you want, at the updated version, and you can understand the assignment. And most of the time, it doesn't really change that much. The rules stay pretty much the same as far as parliamentary procedure, what we would use it for. And it's just nice that it's already a resource that's been well-established and lots of people use it. And it just gives us that framework we can work with it. So I'd be in favor of voting yes for the motion.
Further discussion? Then, the motion on the table is to adopt Robert's Rules of Order. Whose, whose turn is it to start? Laura, I'm going to start with you.
I vote no.
Jackie?
Yay.
Jessica?
No.
Arthur?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
And I vote no as well. So the motion is for in favor, three opposed.
So just a point of clarification, then, really quick. I would then work with Tom to get the current Robert's Rules of Order and I would include that in a regular board update as far as...
I think every board member's going to need something, um, a formal, um, amount of training on, on Robert, Robert's Rules. I mean, maybe it's, it's not something that we've ever used strictly. And it's going to be, um, interesting, so.
And I think there is a Robert's Rules for Dummies, just if anybody wants to get a little head start on it or if you haven't seen it at all, um, it's kind of a good little jumpstart into it. Um, they also have a little condensed version, too, that gets you mostly familiar with the rules that are used most often, because all seventy are rarely used, um, just, just for my board members. So just for clarification, Robert, earlier you said that we would be required to attend training here in this building on Robert's Rules. Is that what you meant?
It, it, you know what, I mean, we've never used Robert's Rules.
I mean, I personally have.
Can, can, can anybody quote me the first one? What is Robert's First Rule of Order?
I prefer not to have to take training if I don't have to, so I'm just asking for clarification.
I, I understand. I mean, we're all very busy, so.
So do we have to take the training or not?
Hmm?
Do we have to take training? And if so, when?
I mean, it's, uh, we, we agreed as part of our bylaws to train on the items that are, are, uh, the business of the board. And now we've adopted Robert's Rules of Order as the method of conducting our board meetings. So, yeah, we're all going to have to take training, I think.
I'd have to, if I could, Tom.
Sure.
I, I would say, I would disagree that it's not mandatory to take the training here at this location. You could take the, uh, a training wherever you would like. And it's up to the individual person to take the responsibility and burden themselves on the information. So if you didn't want to take it here, you wouldn't have to. We could provide a training that would enhance everybody's knowledge, but it's not mandatory to take.
So it would be optional?
Yeah.
I, if I could just say, too, I think that I could see board members coming back and requesting items on the agenda if they feel they need training. Then it could come back as an agenda item with a motion and approval. And then that could get us into a place of mandatory required, I'm not sure. But like, I, I think we can share the resources that have been shared in this discussion with the board. I think in our bylaws, we do have a commitment to develop ourselves in preparation for your role as a trustee. And I think that if anybody feels like, whoa, this is big, I think we need some training, that could come up as a future gem.
Well, Tom, since this has dropped into my lap, I would like to request some time with you, um, to, um, get spun up on this process.
Yes, and, uh, I can work with staff to provide the board a variety of resources. I, um, didn't know there was a Robert's Rules for Dummies, so thank you, Jackie. That sounds like the one that I need to read.
This is a point of clarification. I, I'm not opposed to the training. I'm just saying, it shouldn't, none of it is mandatory.
And a two-thirds vote on a seven-person board is four point six six six, so that'll be fun.
Being along to item, oh, where we at? Nine point three, point three, creation of a board bylaw revision subcommittee. Michael, this was your, uh, request?
Yeah, I think we, there are several board bylaws that we need, and policies possibly, that we need to discuss, because some of them, like that nine zero zero five, there's some things in there that might not be relevant anymore. Like it says, you can't eat any food, it's not provided by the staff. Well, we only ever have cookies over there, and I'm not really a big fan of just eating cookies all the time. And then just some other things seem very subjective, like demeanor or in, like, things, things like that that are really, any up to interpretation. So I think we need to review several of our bylaws and possibly several of our policies. I'm sure some of you saw that CSBA email that came out, that we have like twenty different policies that might need to be reviewed or modified based on that Supreme Court decision that just came out. So I think, uh, creation of a subcommittee that could work on that, that then bring it back to the full board might be a good idea.
Discussion?
Really quick, included in your packet is recent bylaw revision work that has been done by the board. I know that the board composition is different than when that board bylaw revision work was done. But it is a, I think it's a helpful resource, helpful summary. It was a, it was a very time-consuming work. It was a very time-consuming work, and Laura spent a lot of hours in those bylaws. And it tries to... That summary captures some of the language that was revised. And we felt like instead of sending you all of the bylaws, we would share this document with you as kind of a recap summary of recent board bylaw work that has been done.
Comments? Discussion?
I mean, I like the idea. Lots of organizations do it. I'm involved in a couple that we just have a bylaw committee. So having this would be very good, especially when you have to update things. I know CSBA tries to update, and then the staff has to bring the new CSBA thing to us, and then we review it, and sometimes it's, you know, we get our agenda on Thursday night or whenever we get it, and then we have about five days to preview it. But we don't actually get the time to sit down and to discuss as a subcommittee each policy that we'd like to update and revise and then bring it before the board, and then as a majority decide if we want to change it or keep it, you know. So I think it'd be a nice addition to what we have already.
I do, too, but I have a question for Tom. Tom, the agenda item is for a Subcommittee for Bylaw Revision, but we're also mentioning revisions possibly to policy. Is it out of order to make this bylaw and policy, or can bylaw encompass policy?
No, I don't think it's out of order. I think if the board wants to expand the committee, as you suggested, that would be acceptable. One other point for the board's information. Standing committees are generally subject to the Brown Act, so this one would be as well.
Unless you made it ad hoc.
Correct.
And did you... Do you know the difference in this, Michael, ad hoc? And so with a subcommittee, you would be... You would have Brown Act secretary, whatnot. With an ad hoc, you'd have one person from the board chairing, and so you wouldn't have to do the...
So it'd be like the Substance Abuse or Literacy Committee?
So... Well, you have minutes on those initiatives, too.
The number of board members matter?
No, it's not the number of board members that's determinative. It's whether it has a standing agenda or a fixed purview that can last over time. So Board Bylaw or Board Policy Committees typically are subject to the Brown Act. Some Budget Review Committees, other committees like that that are created by board action, regardless of the number of members. And as Jackie said, ad hoc generally means limited time for one or two projects. So ad hoc committees can be things like review of potential facilities plans for remodeling this building.
So that's a good point. So the difference being a short-term fixed. And you mentioned those chunk of policies, I think CSBA listed 20 or 22, 19, 20, 21. The fastest way through that, in my opinion, would be doing ad hoc for that chunk of policy, so you can move through them quicker and present them to the board. Wouldn't expire when you finish that chunk. But just an ongoing Subcommittee for Bylaw and Policy, I think, would be also a good idea. I just wanted to throw that out as an option with an ad hoc.
I mean, Robert, you were also interested in forming this Subcommittee, too. What are your thoughts on it?
Well, I mean, the bylaws are something that probably need to be revised periodically, but I don't think they need to be revised continuously. Okay, so having an ad hoc committee to come out and make suggestions for revising the bylaws, I think is a great idea. We did it in, was it 2023? No, a few years ago. And came up with some good revisions. But doing it on a constant basis is not conducive to... Or conducive to doing the work this board is supposed to be doing, which is making sure that every student in this county has the access and the opportunity for an appropriate public education. So I don't see a problem with having an ad hoc committee. A standing committee, I think, would be too much. Doing periodic revision of the bylaws and policies is something that we should do as a board, so.
Mr. President, one option to consider, if I may.
Hmm?
You can have a standing committee that is subject to the Brown Act and is a thing that exists over time, and it doesn't need to have a fixed meeting schedule, and it could still meet on an as-needed basis.
Does it need to have a fixed membership?
No, you can have, you know, one or two or three board members as appointed by the board president, however you want to do it. So what you would do for a standing committee is typically just say, we're going to have three board members on it, or two board members on it. And if you really want a standing committee, you could say, we're going to meet every month. We're going to meet every quarter. But you can also have a standing committee that would be, we're going to meet when the board requests them to review policies. So it's going to have an existence that's intended.
Thank you.
As opposed to the other option, which Jackie brought up, which is, we're going to do a short project. We're going to look at a bunch of board policies, and then we're going to stop.
So I guess it's up to the board which direction you want to take with those.
And I didn't present this. I'm okay either way. I just wanted to make sure, because you presented it, that you were clear on the different formations.
So it would just be whatever motion was made, either ad hoc or standing, right?
Please.
It would just be whatever the motion was, and if it was moved as an ad hoc committee, that's what we'd vote on. If it was moved as a standing committee, that's what we'd vote on, right?
Right. Yes. Arthur, you have something else?
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the Brown Act. So what we're saying is that if it is a standing committee, you have to abide by the Brown Act, meaning not a majority of members can be on the standing committee. But if it's an ad hoc committee, then a majority of members can be on the committee.
If it's a standing committee and it's subject to the Brown Act, it doesn't matter how many board members are on it. You're still going to have to, you know, even if there's only one or two or three board members on it, you still have to post the agenda and follow the Brown Act formalities. If it is a standing committee, then other, you know, members of the board could attend, if they wanted to, as audience members, because you're already following the Brown Act formalities.
And then if it's an ad hoc committee, then you're not posting an agenda?
Correct, and that's why it needs to be limited in time and have a limited scope. The example I gave earlier being looking at facilities plans or looking at a specific topic of a couple of board policies.
And less than four.
Yes, less than four, and thank you.
And then to follow up with that, so then our board initiatives are an ad hoc, or are they a standing committee?
I believe you created them as ad hoc.
Ad hoc.
Okay. So I mean, okay. So if we want to do a standing committee, we'd have to have people invested in making the agenda, putting it out there, having regular meetings. If that's what someone wants to motion, and if we want to do ad hoc, it's just what we've been doing for the board initiatives, where it's kind of informal and we're working on case by case. I'm in favor for either one.
Just to clarify, Tom, in Mr. Michael's question, if an ad hoc is moved, does the motion have to provide the scope? If it needs to be limited in scope, how is that limit defined?
I would recommend that, yes. If you want to form an ad hoc committee, we should say something like, it's going to exist for four to six months, and it's going to look at topics A and B.
Further discussion? Questions? Comments?
If you wanted to make a Subcommittee that's done by the Brown Act, you could just meet an hour before the meeting here. Someone wants to do that. So, I mean, like I said, I'm in favor of either one. But I think it's a good idea to review our bylaws and our policies.
I do want to point out that Whitmore Mountain Union will be taking up that footprint with some county committee meetings before board meetings. So you can back it up further and have that Subcommittee.
We could always do an ad hoc and then come back if we decided that it was needed more permanently, right? After like four to six months.
So I need to know what you guys want to do.
I guess I move that we create an ad hoc committee to review the board policies and bylaws Subcommittee.
I add to the motion for a period of six months?
Yes, I forgot to put the time.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, so the motion is for an ad hoc committee with a termination date of six months?
Yeah, and the bylaws and policies, maybe can we put it on to the ones that were sent out to the CSBA that we want to look, that they recommended we look at? Those 22, I think, policies.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is the... You're moving to create an ad hoc committee with a life of six months to review board bylaws and policies?
Yes, the recommended CSBA 22 policies and also Board Bylaw 9005.
Is there a second?
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded that we appoint an ad hoc committee to review bylaws and policies and terminate it after six months. Discussion? Yes.
No, and the ones that CSBA sent out, those 22 policies, yes. Yes, because we actually already took care of that other bylaw that the Robert's Rules of Order...
Further discussion? We will proceed with the roll call, though. Jackie? Jessica?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And I will affirm as well. Thank you. 70 to 0. Does anybody want to take a break before we go to the superintendent's report? Yes, please. I heard a yes, please. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Really quick, how do we establish who's on that?
That's what I was going to... After the break?
Copy.
Copy.